This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 3rd meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 6:00 PM, we had a work session with the historic Jarvisburg Colored School to discuss restroom facilities at the refurbished school. At this time, it is my pleasure to ask Reverend Susan Fitch Slater from Sharon United Methodist Church to lead us in the invocation and also the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the gift of this day. We thank you for everything that your hand has provided and for everything that you in your grace and mercy have kept at bay. We acknowledge that all authority comes from you and you alone. And so, we would ask that you would send your spirit of wisdom and counsel into this place, that those, Lord, who you have set in position would govern with righteousness, with justice, with mercy. Give to them great counsel and discernment. That all decisions made would be according to your will, would benefit your people, would strengthen your kingdom. And as we stand on this election eve, we commit your people and your kingdom into your care and pray that we all would have the spirit of unity and harmony, that we would serve you by serving one another. Be present, Lord, we pray, and be glorified, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fitch Slater, you're new to our community. Do you want to tell anything where you're from and where you're at?
Certainly.
Go to the microphone so every...
Pastors always will put a plug in for themselves and for their church. So, thank you for the privilege of being before you. I am Susie Fitch Slater. I have the privilege of serving as pastor at Sharon United Methodist Church in Poplar Branch. I am originally from Dare County, grew up in Wanchees, served in Connecticut for 20 years, but by the grace of God, I have come back home and planned to be here. But I count it a privilege to be a part of Currituck County and the great things that are happening here. So, I look forward to supporting you and...
Supporting you.
Thank you very much.
We welcome you, and there's great people in this county, and they're there for you if you need them.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is approval of agenda. We have a budget amendment for the water system that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda. The county manager is not prepared for it tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item is public comment. We have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone that didn't get a chance to sign up? Seeing none, I'll close the public...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make one...
I'll continue the public comment.
Thank you.
And recognize Ms. Gilbert.
Monday night, the Crawford Fire Department honored Harvey Roberts for his 40 years of service. He was a volunteer with the fire and rescue, and I just wanted to bring that up. I had a previous engagement and could not make that, so I just want to shout out to Mr. Roberts and congratulate him on his years of service. Paul, if you had anything additional to that, I just hated that I missed that ceremony, but just wanted to go ahead and get that out there. Congratulations and thank you for the many, many years of service.
I'd just say they had a wonderful recognition meeting for Mr. Roberts. He's been a part of the fire department and when we used to have a volunteer rescue squad, and he's a... Some of the people that are aging out and some of the younger folks have got to step up and join the volunteer fire departments and help fill those slots. It's very important that the volunteer fire departments continue because I tell you, we cannot afford what it would cost for a paid fire department in Currituck County. So, if you have a desire to serve, I think everyone's gotten a postcard within the last week that gives you a phone number for every fire department in your... Wherever you may live, that you could go and call and find out how to be a part of it. So, thank you.
How many years did he have?
Forty.
And so, he's retired?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
And he had a lot of stories to share about how they built the fire departments, and he was on the ambulance call when the Crawford Fire Department burnt down. He was in Elizabeth City, and when he heard the call, he said he couldn't believe that the fire department was on fire. It's just a whole lot of history as these folks age out and others need to move in. With that, I'll close the public comments and move to administrative reports. And we have Ms. Joan DiBello tonight to give us an update on the Tar Heel Senior Legislative Update.
Thank you, and that was a wonderful lead-in about seniors and aging out and having younger people step up. On October 9th and 10th in Raleigh, the senior Tar Heel legislation met. This meeting made a known fact very significant. The Senior Center of Currituck is a primary source of information and networking for the seniors of our county. On a monthly basis, there is an average of 930 meals delivered to shut-ins, flu shots are given when it's necessary, tax prep is available during the tax season, and this was made available with the help of the double ARP people, so we're really very grateful to them. Also, guest speakers are invited to discuss and present topics that influence the seniors' well-being. Such an example of that is the Medicare Part D for prescription use that was clarified for the seniors, because when that first became available, everybody was totally confused about monies, what they could do, or they had to go. So, the speakers that we had coming in were really great. Also, Stacy does day trips for the seniors, takes them to restaurants, malls for shopping, and also plans overnight trips. She's done a wonderful job. Well, because we're so happy with our senior center, I was really dismayed when I was there because we're totally disappointed with the cuts in the state budget that affect all of us, especially the seniors who have limited incomes. This is why we worked so hard over there as a group, and that group was formed in 1993, and that's when they first recognized the need for seniors to have some representation. So, as a group, the STHL submits five priority legislative concerns to the legislators in Raleigh. We have been working on these for the past two years. Maintaining funding for senior centers is on the list that would be submitted to our legislators in Raleigh, and because of all the cuts, we don't want to see anything go away from our wonderful building and all that is being done there for the seniors. So, thank you very much for allowing me this time to explain and to present the information that I've come back with, and I'll keep you informed. Thank you again.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions before? I just would like to say we're fortunate here in Currituck that previous boards and the citizens have been very supportive of our senior programs, and it's a great program. And I go out there and see it's a lot of participation, so thanks again for going.
Okay, and thank you for the time. Okay.
Thank you. The next report is Tourism Department Awards Recognition. We have our tourism director, Ms. Tamara Krugler, and I guess you'll introduce yourself since I just said your name, but this is kind of your debut.
I will. Good evening, and thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm Tamara Krugler, the Director of Travel and Tourism for Currituck. We have a marvelous staff at the tourism department, and because of all of their hard work, I'm pleased to announce that the Currituck County Department of Travel and Tourism was presented with platinum and gold awards during the Destination Marketing Association of North Carolina 2014 Tourism Leadership Conference on October 9th. The DMA NC awards honor and showcase innovation, best practices, creativity, and outstanding efforts and results in destination marketing. Currituck's Travel and Tourism received a platinum award in Best Print Advertising Leisure for its Shopping and Dining Guide, and I believe you have a copy of that if you'd like to take a look at it. And also, they won a gold award in Best Niche Advertising for its Co-Op ad in the Duck Corolla Guide. Both of these pieces are the work of Dan Cloudsley, Travel and Tourism's Creative Director, and I'd like to introduce him to you tonight. Dan, would you please? As you can see, he does some wonderful work. Thank you. I also just wanted to briefly go over a few points of 2013. I put a little packet up there for you. Just a few points of the economic impact that tourism has had on the Outer Banks and Currituck specifically in 2013. Domestic tourism in Currituck County generated an economic impact of $137.71 million in 2013. This was a 5% increase over 2012. For travel impact, Currituck County ranked 33 in travel impact among North Carolina's 100 counties. Jobs created in Currituck County were more than 15,000, and these were directly attributable to travel and tourism. And payroll in Currituck County, there was $25.08 million in 2013. State and local tax revenues for Currituck County was $12.07 million. And finally, most important to our citizens is the tax savings to each county resident because of travel and tourism was $501.77. Once again, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Ms. Krugler?
Questions?
Yes.
Thought I was going to get away cleanly. Oh, well.
I want to clarify, tax savings to each county resident, that's not per household, that's per resident, every man, woman, and child, right?
Per resident.
Okay.
That's per resident.
Good job.
And I think everybody needs to stop and get one of these brochures, even if you live in the county, because it highlights all the different things, not just on the Outer Banks, but also the mainland. It's broken down into two different portions. You've got Knott's Island, you've got the southern portion of the county, the middle part, and then the north mainland as well, and it gives you the dining options and things that you may drive by every day and just wonder what it is, and you may want to stop and see.
We would love to have everybody come to the tourism center. We'd love to see you. There's lots of stuff there that you can look at, lots of brochures, lots of exhibits. We welcome everyone to come. I think if you look at the co-op ad, we're really proud of those. Co-op ads, our tourism department will buy an ad in a magazine, in this case, the Duck Corolla Guide, and we give our businesses an opportunity to have an ad, a co-op ad, with us at a greatly reduced cost. So, it's an opportunity for our businesses to get into a larger venue such as Southern Living, some of our other magazines, at a price that they can afford. So, we're really proud of that co-op program.
Yes, sir.
In today's Virginia Pilot, there was a write-up about tourism increases in Dare County for the shoulder season. I'm assuming that's carrying over for Currituck as well for the shoulder season, because the article was about Dare County.
Yeah, we saw an increase in September in occupancy tax and also in October. I heard from a lot of our vacation rental management companies and our businesses that they saw a lot of people in September and October that they haven't seen in years. So, we attribute that to a later season. We got off to a little bit of a later start. The Northeast experienced a lot of snow, which caused the kids to stay in school a lot longer, so some vacations were put off. We also experienced the little hurricane scare at the beginning of July. So, we were very pleased to see that we made up some of that visitation in September and October.
Good job.
All right, anyone else? We thank you and your staff for all that you do.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is public hearing. PB 1416, Lakeview at Currituck, request for a development agreement between Currituck County and Survey Road LLC for property located in Moayoc on Survey Road west of the intersection with Carrottoke Highway, Tax Map 15, parcel 38, Moayoc Township. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a development agreement. To my knowledge, this is the first request that Currituck County has ever considered for a development agreement. So, this is new, not only for the board, but for the staff and the community as well. So, what we're suggesting tonight during the public hearing is that staff present an introduction to the development agreement. The applicant's prepared to provide additional information, and we would suggest that the board actually vote on this agreement at the next meeting and give the community time and the board time to kind of understand what this agreement encompasses and what it means. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move forward into an introduction. Development agreements are available to counties and municipalities in North Carolina. They are enabled in the North Carolina General Statutes. The purpose and intent of a development agreement is to encourage capital facilities planning and comprehensive planning, to encourage or to ensure the provision of adequate public facilities for development, to encourage the efficient use of resources while providing certainty in the development approval process, and then to reduce the economic cost of development by providing greater regulatory certainty. I'm going to get into a little more about this specific development agreement in a second, but real quickly, I want to talk about the property. This property before you tonight is Lakeview at Currituck. Most of you probably know this as South Ridge. The name of this development for many years was South Ridge. It's been recently changed to Lakeview at Currituck. On aerial photograph, you can see the subject parcel on the west side of Survey Road. It is near the middle, or excuse me, the middle school and just adjacent to the Eagle Creek subdivision. A little bit of zoning history. This property was first zoned from agricultural to residential on December 4th of 2006. That rezoning would have allowed approximately 77 lots. Following that, on May 7th, 2007, a planned unit development was approved for this property. A planned unit development is typically a higher-density development that has commercial allocations, open space, and has central wastewater. On the May 7th, 2007 approval, that was for 121 lots, 5.23 acres of commercial, and it did provide for a centralized wastewater system to be built on the property in a portion of the open space. On December 3rd, 2007, the plan, an amended planned unit development approval was approved. That increased the density of the subdivision to 146 lots, which it remains today, and 5.67 acres of commercial. At that time, there was discussion of actually having a library site on this property, which did not come to fruition. On July 6th, 2009, the preliminary plat was approved, again, for 146 lots and 5.56 acres of commercial. And that also maintained the on-site centralized wastewater system. On February 1st, 2010, an amended preliminary plat was approved, again, for 146 lots, 5.46 acres of commercial. The reason that preliminary plat was amended at that time was that the wastewater system was then shown to either be built on-site as a centralized wastewater system or to be connected in to the Eagle Creek wastewater system, because as you know, Eagle Creek also has a centralized wastewater system. On November 5th, 2012, a preliminary plat extension was granted for two years, again, for 146 lots, 5.46 acres of commercial, and that maintained that central wastewater would be provided on-site or at the Eagle Creek subdivision. That last preliminary plat extension is set to expire on January 1st, 2015. So, that's the zoning history for this subdivision, which I think is important to understanding kind of how we've gotten to where it started to where we are today. So, as you can tell, this subdivision has been in some form of approval process for eight years now. Development agreement specifically to this property is, again, an agreement between the county and the developer, and what this does is the developer is proposing to install a new oversized public sewer force main from the subject property from the development to the county's wastewater system, which currently goes as far south as the Moayoc Commons Shopping Center. The sewer mains, pump stations, and impertences, or the pieces that make the sewer main work will be subject, that are subject to the development agreement, will be dedicated to the county upon completion of their construction.
Mr. Woody, how far is that? What's the distance?
Is it about two miles? Am I correct? Or... I don't, I'll have to look at my file. I can do that, or Mr. Bissell can answer that, but I can get that number for you.
I'd say it's probably closer to a mile.
It's closer to a mile.
First, it's two miles.
Yeah. I'll look, I'll give the answer to you in a second, Commissioner Idol. It does, it does go down from Moayoc Commons to the entrance to Survey Road, and then from Survey Road, it extends down that road to the entrance to the subdivision. Upon completion, the sewer mains, pump stations, and impertences will be deeded to Currituck County. Through approval of the development agreement, the county will reserve capacity in the Moayoc Central Sewer System for the build-out of the Lakeview at Currituck subdivision, and will consider cost of the installation of the sewer main as a cost of development for the purposes of establishing zoning vested rights. So, what that means in real brief summary is, is the developer is proposing to install the infrastructure and deed it to the county, and in exchange, the county is proposing or allowing that project to remain vested under the current UDO.
When will the build-out of the sewer main take place?
I will have to ask the developer to specify that in more detail. There is some timelines that are included in the development agreement. I do know the developer's plan is to build and have platted Phase 1 of this development within two years. So, it's a fairly quick installation process. Now, the date of which the infrastructure is actually installed, I don't know that date, but I know the plan is to have the construction begin immediately. In the development agreement, in addition to just the vesting of the subdivision and the extension of the sewer force main, it also covers fee structures, how the reserved payments are paid by the developer, the timing of the development, any modifications to the plan. It's basically an exhaustive list of how this subdivision moves forward. It has a length of eight years, so this development agreement is good for eight years, and under that eight years, all terms must be fulfilled. Developers also submitting an amended sketch plan and amended preliminary plat. Those have not been advertised, but will be advertised and before you for a public hearing at your next meeting. Most of the changes on the preliminary plat are fairly technical or non-substantive. There are a few changes, I think. One is the developer is going to discuss tonight about requesting reduced side setbacks for the development. There's some rearranging of the sidewalk, infrastructure in the subdivision, intersection, street spacings being revised, revised phasing plan. So, there's a number of things that you'll see before you at your next meeting in terms of the actual amendment to the plan, but tonight, we're really discussing the development agreement. The planning board heard this case at their August meeting. They did recommend unanimous approval, and at this point, staff can answer any questions you have.
Questions?
And I'll get an answer for you on the link, Commissioner Idol.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, when this was approved, what, 2006? So, it's eight years ago?
The original rezoning was approved in 2006.
Roughly eight years ago.
Yes.
Had the flooding issues and stormwater started to raise their ugly head in Moayoc in 2006?
I was not here in 2006, so I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Yes. They were.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any control as far as what to do with stormwater? Has anything changed as far as what the original subdivision was going to do for stormwater and what they're going to do now with stormwater? Has that changed? That's question number one, and what's the answer on that one?
This subdivision was permitted under approval of the previous UDO, so they are subject to the standards that were in effect in 2010, and those are slightly different from our current stormwater standards. The current stormwater standards, I would say, are more rigorous than they were then. The standard is in effect at that time, however, still, we still had, the county still had the requirement that post-development stormwater discharge cannot exceed pre-development discharge. So, there is a, there is a pretty significant stormwater requirement, but it is under the old ordinance.
Okay. Question number two is, when we were having to deal with Moayoc stormwater last, at the beginning of this year, with another development at Moayoc Commons, the gentleman that owns the field adjacent to Charlie High's Engine Shop and the Golf Cart Place talked about flooding. And at that time, and maybe we'll get an update on that, we, myself and Commissioner O'Neill, met with DOT out there, and DOT committed to doing a hydrology study, isn't that what they called it, Ms. Scannell?
That's right.
And we haven't heard anything on that, have we?
Correct.
Okay. At the time they were discussing this, there's right across Carrottoke Highway, there are three culverts there that were some question about the size of those culverts. Are you familiar with that?
I am.
Okay. Now, my question is, is going to go back to stormwater. What are we doing to make sure that we don't create a bigger problem for the Moayoc Commons area around Food Lion and that field right there next to Charlie High's? Because there's culverts. I think the Jerry Jennings with DOT said they can't make them bigger because the utilities run through them. So, that bottleneck is still there. Are we doing anything as far as making sure we don't have a bigger stormwater problem along the corridor there?
Yeah, I'd probably have to defer to the county engineer, but I do know, and I do remember that in 2010, when this development was discussed, there was a lot of discussion about the culverts under the highway, and I want to say that they may have done a downstream analysis, if that's correct. Yes, so they did. They're one of the few developments that actually did a downstream analysis, and I believe that may have even required some cleaning of ditches down the stream or some additional stormwater capacity on the site to deal with whatever blockages were downstream. So, I think that was factored in, in the stormwater approval.
I know the county just cleaned some ditches in Moayoc, but I don't think that ditch, I guess it would be west of the culvert was taken into account. My concern is, and I'll be quiet, is that we're creating a bigger stormwater issue because there's already one that exists there with those culverts further north, and I just want to make sure that that's taken into account. So, is that something we're going to cover at the next meeting when we vote this thing out?
I think we can. I think, I think the engineer of record for the plan is here tonight, and I think he can probably address some of the technical details of that downstream analysis and how the stormwater pond was approved in 2010.
Isn't the issue the fact that it's already an approved subdivision?
It is.
So, we'd be asked, and the concerns are genuine, we'd be asking to add addition to the already approved subdivision. I think the issue is, is DOT, they vehemently disagree, but the water used to flow north, and when they four-laned, five-laned the highway in Moayoc, they decided water's going to flow south, and then it's going to go across the road, under the road, further south, and then flow north in the other ditch. And the other ditch stays pretty much dry. It's rare that you see water in that, in that other ditch across the street, so there are some issues still with the way the water runs in Moayoc. And I've had disagreements with the engineers, but you can't make water run uphill. In my opinion, that's what they tried to do. They took some culverts out that were under the road already existing when they put the new road in, and as I said, they're making the water run south when the natural tendency was north, but you can't get them to agree to that under any circumstances, but the folks that live there that have just common horse sense, they know what they're talking about. So, that's, I think that's the issue you're trying to...
The only issue I've got, and I agree, if it's already approved, it's kind of, you know, the horse is out of the barn, but that doesn't solve the problem of the people that live in that, in that particular area. And I remember the farmer being here and had pictures of the field flooding, and this And I remember the farmer being here and had pictures of the field flooding, and this, this development adjoins his field.
Well, I, I think the reality of the situation is this. The development today is not vested, so, and the timeline for that is getting ready to run out. This action today is gonna create vesting. Once it's vested, then the rules and regulations of 2010 or whatever are the plans of the day. If the vesting does not occur, well, then, I don't know what the, I don't know what their timeline is for moving forward to expend funds to be vested, or whatever the case may be, but I mean, there's, there's some play in there.
Actually, it's vested, but the vesting runs out December 31st. It is vested right now, but the, the legislature in 2000 and, what, 10?
Given extension.
Gave them a two-year extension automatic to everything, and these two years run out December 31st. So if they were already started, this would be moot.
That's right. Well, that was my point.
I just think we would... I think we would be remiss if we didn't address this. You know, I realize that they have rights, but that doesn't fix the problem that we all know is there, and just to go, I don't see that, I think is wrong. And, and I think it's a good idea, but I think that's something that has to be addressed.
All right. Any further questions, or you have?
I was gonna follow up to Commissioner Idlet's questions. Like, I have the drawing, but I don't have a scale, so I can't tell you the distance of the force main, but I think Mr. Bissell can do that.
It's close enough.
Schedule is, this, they're proposing for permitting for the wastewater, uh, installation, as well as the whole subdivision, uh, but, or primarily the wastewater installation, permitting from November to December, and then construction of Phase One to begin in January 2015. Construction of Phase One would be obviously the wastewater connection, as well as the other parts of the subdivision. The goal is to record Phase One of the subdivision in 2015, record Phase Two in 2016, Phase Three in 2017, and Phase Four in 2018. And there is a phasing plan in your, uh, package. Thank you.
That's on page 60. All right. Some more questions? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the representatives to give their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am John Morrison with the Twyford Law Firm here in Currituck. Our offices are in Moayok. I have the pleasure of representing the developer. If I may, I'd like to introduce Mr. Meyer, Mr. James Meyer, who's the developer, the owner of the LLC. You all know Mark Bissell and the engineer, and I'm particularly pleased to introduce to you, in her first public appearance, the newest member of the Currituck Bar, Megan Brothers Morgan. And I brought her along because she's a ringer and a native of the county, and I thought it would help me.
Wise move.
We're very pleased to have her. This, my understanding, is the first time Currituck has looked at a development agreement. So I'm gonna take just a very few minutes to explain how they work and, and cutting to the chase is, I see the members I used to work for, uh, the no-spin zone here is, what's in it for the county, right? Okay, what's in it for the people of Currituck? And why do a development agreement? First, you're under no obligation to accept a development agreement. It's just as the, the word suggests, it is an agreement. The developers got to agree to it, you got to agree to it. Okay. You may be familiar with the phrase of, um, contract zoning, and that's a big no-no when those kind of things come before you. That's when the developer says, wink, wink, nod, nod, "I do this in the development. If you'll give me the zoning I need." Well, forever and a day, that was illegal, and the court said you, in essence, were selling your vote, not for your personal benefit, but, you know, you were selling your vote. If the developer would do something like this, then yeah, I'll give you the zoning you want. Lo and behold, what was once illegal is now lawful. Times change, development intensified, the need for capital, the need for certainty, the need to integrate with county services increased, and in 2005, and it was amended again in 2010, the General Assembly passed, uh, a statute authorizing development agreements. They thought it would be helpful to local government and to the developers. This is covered in Section 153A, 349, why the General Assembly did it, but it's very relevant to you. So take this into account, please. The General Assembly find that there were large-scale developments that involved multiple phases over a period of years that would require a significant commitment from the county to be able to accommodate the development, and at the same time, it was gonna require a significant commitment from the developer in resources, in, in money, in staging, in getting employment and labor on time and in place. That there was gonna be a need for an integration of public and private financing and planning and construction, and that if you do this right, if you experiment, if you tinker a little bit, you can come up with something that would be out of the ordinary, but it would be better for the community and better for the developer than what you could do under the normal UDO. To sum it up, I think it's two things. It allows flexibility in what the county can demand and get and be certain is going to receive, and, just as you pointed out, Commissioner Idlet, it, it can vest rights in the developer, which is not an ugly thing. If the developer is going to spend lots of money, then he needs to be sure that the rules of the game don't change in the middle of the game, because he's gonna make this, this commitment. Now, although this is your first experience with it, it is gaining a toehold in northeastern North Carolina. To my personal knowledge, Camden entered into a, um, a development agreement for Camden Plantation, and Chawan has just entered into a development agreement for Riverside Phase Two. I don't know if Pasquetankar dare have done it, but it, it's coming. It's a popular tool. Tonight, of course, is a public hearing, uh, and this, by the way, is a political consideration. This is not like a special use permit where you sit as a quasi-judicial board. You are likely to vote on this, I understand, at the next session, but tonight is an opportunity for people to say pro and con what they think of it. This will be an ordinance, just like any other ordinance you pass. However, because there is a public hearing, uh, tonight, it can pass by a simple majority at the next meeting. It doesn't require, like most ordinances, unanimity to pass on the first reading. Now, as is the planning director's custom, uh, he has given you an excellent sermon, and I don't want to belabor your time too much, but I'm getting paid by the hour, so bear with me so I can drag this out just a little bit. Take a joke, Mr. Morrison. Okay. Yes, yes, I do. This involves 74.23 acres, 120 Survey Road in Moayok. I commend you to Exhibit A of the development agreement. It is a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. There will be, right now, 146 residential lots and 7.21 acres of commercial development. You can also find, as exhibits in Schedule B and C, the sketch plans amended and the preliminary plat amended. It is going to have amenities, a recreational lake, pedestrian, and bicycle paths, and it will become effective within 10 days upon your approval, if you so deem it wise. There is a timing schedule, and that's very important, because under regular residential developments under the UDO, they keep getting renewed and they expand, and, and it can end up being a mess. There are four phases, and they're set forth in Exhibit E, and basically, it would start, the permitting, if it was passed, would start in the end of November through December, and construction would begin, uh, in 2015, and it would run through 2018. There's a specific provision that, although because of weather or market forces or whatever, these are not cast in concrete, but in no event can there be more than two years between the termination of one development phase and the next. Now, what is in it for you? I would strongly urge that you look in the development agreement, beginning on page four, and I don't expect you to do it now, but when you study it. This is where the developer is committing to build force mains, gravity sewer collection systems, lift stations, uh, reservation and payment of sewer taps, and if you look at the numbers, they're included. There's some big numbers running towards Currituck County. The developer is also, when he finishes with this, he's going to, uh, convey the facilities to the county. And this is going to be designed so it would not just be of utility to this development, but to the 168 corridor for other developments that you may have coming online. The county, in turn, is going to guarantee that the wastewater service will be there when he gets ready to use it, when the development reaches the stage that they need it. Very important point, and I return to, to your pertinent question, Commissioner Idlet. The developer gets out of this the fact that the development standards are not gonna change as reflects this development. In other words, the density is gonna stay the same, the setbacks will stay the same, et cetera, things that could affect the profitability of, uh, of going forward with a substantial investment. And that would be the standards that were in existence when the developer first obtained a special use permit, and we need to go over the dates. I think Ben said it was 2010. Uh, my notes indicate it was July 6, 2009. However, it is correct, those rights are set to expire on January 1st of this year. So, the developer gets certainty, you get a substantial investment in the infrastructure of wastewater on this corridor. Now, there's an eight-year term. It's all got to be finished in eight years. I won't go into the details of it, but the agreement provides oversight on your behalf, where you get to come in and have status reports, and if it's not going, uh, according to HOIL, you get to say, well, this has got to be done by a certain date. There are cure provisions, standard kind of things in contracts. It is also, and this is, I think, is very important. How many times have you had a developer comes in front of you and says, "Wow, if you'll just change this zoning, I'm gonna build Shangri-La out here." And you change the zoning, and then the developer sells it to a trailer park, and he's gone because it's a permitted use. Okay, this development agreement will run with the land, meaning for the term of this agreement, this is the only thing that can be built on this property, according to these standards. Finally, uh, this enjoys a unanimous recommendation from your planning board, which, of course, is advisory, and from the staff. Now, I'm going to turn you over at this point, if I may, to Mr. Bissell. He is the math and science guy. I, I don't believe in technology. I think it's a double spawn, but he went to Duke, so he'll cover that. The, when we finish up, if you have any questions of us, or if you've got questions of me on the non-engineering points right now, and Commissioner Idlet, I would suggest, and Commissioner Petry, we start out with your concerns about the, uh, stormwater runoff. And my thought is, being a Moayok resident, where was the stormwater runoff when you needed it? Right? Okay.
About three weeks ago.
Yeah, I could, yes, I could have used some stormwater runoff. Okay. Any questions of me on the non-engineering issues?
Why, of course I do, Mr. Morrison. Under, um, vesting, a developer can vest his project by spending a certain amount of money and work. Why have they not just done that?
I will leave that to be answered by the developer, because it's very embarrassing to me, being a lawyer, to say, "I don't know." That was painful. The, um, fault may be, there was, it hadn't exactly been a gangbusters economy recently, and development, uh, has slowed down, but, um, well, we can do that right now. Mr. Myers, if you'd come up here, please, perhaps you could address that.
Mark can handle that better. He's been through a lot of the process.
All right. Anything else for me before I turn you all over to Mark? Thank you.
Before you answer, Mark, I would like to ask our attorney. I understand under vesting, there's a certain amount of money that can be spent, or a certain amount of work to be done to vest a project to where they don't have to come forward and seek an extension. What is that percentage? Is it 25%?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Woody. It's, it's contained in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Woody.
Under, under the old UDO, and that's what this is under, the, uh, 5% of the total project cost had to be expended for the project to be vested. 5%.
So that's any project that, uh, gets approval. Once they spend 5%, they don't have to come back here and ask for an extension, correct?
Under the old, under the old UDO, that is correct.
What about the new UDO?
The new UDO actually requires submission of a final plat application. So you've actually gotta have the infrastructure installed, or at least a portion of it installed.
Yes.
Yes, I would, I would agree, Commissioner Griggs. I think the new UDO, the vesting requirement is, is more than the old one. That is correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, under the old UDO, was there a minimum lot size?
In the planned unit developments in the old UDO, the minimum lot size was 7,500 square feet.
So in the new UDO, they increased it?
In the new UDO, it's, is the minimum lot size increased in the new UDO? It has not.
So it's still 7,500?
I wanna say the new UDO, it can go down as low as 5,000 square feet. But now, let me say, in the old UDO and the PUDs, there were patio home lots that were allowed to be on 2,000 square foot lots. So there were some options in the old UDO that allowed down to 2,000 square feet.
Either you or Mr. Bissell, what's the average lot size for this development?
They range from 8,100 to 11,150.
I think the average is just over 10,000 square feet.
So, well, we've got some at 8,100.
Yes.
Thank you.
If you could answer my question, Mr. Bissell, I'd appreciate it.
Well, the reason that...
Do the best of your ability.
The reason that, um, there isn't dirt being moved right now is really that there was an opportunity to connect to the county wastewater treatment plant, which the developer would really prefer to do rather than building his own facility, uh, or the Eagle Creek option. This is the most viable alternative and the, the one that is most attractive to him, and so, um, by entering into this development agreement, it would allow him to do that and still maintain his development vested rights. In the event that, uh, you all don't think the development agreement is a good idea, we, we do have a backup plan to try to achieve the 5% vesting under the old ordinance, but that's not a road that we're gonna go down.
Well, one of the things I'm getting at here is, we, um, Phase Four is commercial phase. How many, how many acres is that?
7.21 acres.
7.21 acres. Show me that on the map, please.
There's just a, kind of a conceptual...
So you're kinda out there, almost 168, but not quite there.
Right. Right, the closest part of the property to 168.
And what would be some of the things we could expect on that? Because I realize we've allowed some residential hook into the wastewater system to keep it viable, to keep it, to keep from having to subsidize it. But we do want to see some commercial. And I'd be curious as to, I see that's Phase Four instead of Phase One, which I understand you're going to build your commercial before you build your rooftops. I understand that. But just kind of a general idea of what kind of stuff we would expect to see or what would be the hope for commercial in that area?
Well, it would be really neighborhood commercial type things that would serve the immediate community. You know, one of the things that's been proposed is the possibility of a daycare center, for example. There would be a, I would see things like dry cleaners and maybe a small market, kinds of things that you would want to swing through on your way home from work.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Bissell?
Mr. Bissell, what is the estimated cost of the force main and everything goes with and building the lines?
You know, I don't have a, with me, an estimate of the cost of the force main. What I do have is the, an estimate of the value of the unused portion of the line that's being run from Survey Road to the interest of Mooyak Commons, which we had valued conservatively at about 88,000. And that was being traded for the 1.75 acres within the commercial development, which has a current tax value of, I believe it's $8,750. So the county is actually getting about a tenfold return on that trade.
That would have been an excellent location for a library.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming they're going to have county water there, right?
Yes.
Under the new water agreement we just passed as far as running water for development, if somebody develops between point A and point B, the original developer gets a portion of their money back. Is that right?
No, because this isn't an unserved area. This is, there's water already there.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay, does the same thing hold true with the force main and the sewer line?
I would think the force main and sewer line would be turned over to the county and it would be county property and there would be no return back to the developer. Would be my, I would ask the manager, but...
That is correct.
That's true. The developer is not looking for a return.
You just answered my question because I want to make sure if it's going to be owned by the county, that the developer's not going to be saying, wait a minute, hold it, somebody here, I got my handout. That's, you answered my question. Thank you.
It's kind of like, kind of like this to me. From 2006, the development has been ongoing, okay? If it's developed under the 2006, or under the old UDO, you actually, from what you said while ago, Mr. Woody, you have larger lot sizes than you would have if it was to be under today's UDO, in theory.
It's possible, yes.
So depending on how you look at density and how you look at development, may or may not be a good thing for, depending on you, you look at it. Mr. Bissell just testified that irregardless of whether we accept this development agreement or not, they have plans to move forward. So the vesting is going to take place under the timeline. So that's not a consideration. My main concerning consideration, again, was, as Mr. Petry said, the stormwater deal and just what the difference was between the stormwater plan previous and the new stormwater plan. And I was going to ask Mr. Weatherly to come up and give us a little bite on that, if he would. What are we, what are we losing out from a stormwater perspective under the old plan versus the new plan? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Mark is, you want to go ahead and go first?
Well, Mark can, either one, I don't care.
Well, I just thought it might be helpful if I kind of outline what we have done on this plan.
Okay.
Because it actually exceeds what the old ordinance required because there was a concern about the downstream drainage when we applied for the original special use permit. And actually, actually, I think it was the Second Amendment that it had come up as an issue. And so we actually did do a downstream analysis. We did surveys of the drainage system from the project all the way to the outlet. And there were some constrictions downstream and because of that reason, and there wasn't an easy fix. And for that reason, we oversized the lake on the, and its stormwater detention capacity. If we could go back to the, to that color drawing a second. We've constructed a, or planning to construct a lake that's, I think, six or seven acres in area, and it will hold a lot more than the pre-development runoff requirement from the old ordinance. And so we'll actually be meeting that, metering that out at a rate that the downstream drainage system can handle.
But the big difference in the old ordinance and the new ordinance is the old ordinance allows you to release the stormwater at a rate of a 10-year storm. And now the new ordinance allows you only to release it at a rate of a two-year storm. So your release rate is much lower than it was in the old one. And I believe Mark is saying he's gone beyond that requirement.
So from your professional opinion, is this going to take care of the stormwater in this particular development area? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I can't help it, I got to do it.
He will meet our ordinance.
He will meet? Well, I didn't ask that.
I've seen that field too.
So have I, on numerous occasions, knee deep.
He meets our ordinance.
Commissioner Islett, I would interject that the staff could probably bring back some information comparing the two stormwater ordinance between what was approved versus what the current ordinance requires. And I think we could do that in two weeks.
Well, and, but really, I guess, as I said while ago, it's kind of a moot point. If the developer is ready to move forward, whether we accept this or not, then it's a moot point. The 2010 deal is the 2010 deal. Whoever made the decision 2006, whatever, I'll settle on that. But anyhow.
I think the bottom, the bottom line difference between the development agreement and them pursuing their own wastewater system is you're going to extend your force main from the food line all the way down to Survey Road.
I understand, totally understand.
But I mean, that's the only advantage to the county.
It is.
Of, whereas if we had a new supermarket or Harris Teeter or something wanted to locate on that property, then we'd have to run the force main and pay for it ourselves.
I didn't realize that they were ready to move forward with the vesting and was thinking that could be a carrot to hold out for some updated, yes, stormwater. Excuse me, I might have to be honest about that, that's what I was looking at.
I got you. All right, Mr. Bissell?
The answer was, it was about a mile. I didn't have a scale, but we do have a larger sized drawing and scaling it with my fingers, it scales at about a mile.
The only reason I remember is because we were talking about at some point extending down to Survey Road and it was about a mile, so I just remember that.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager or Engineer, Eric, do we have any plans for extension of the sewer lines within the next two, four, five years? Do we have any plans for extending that sewer line at all?
Good question.
Not the force main, no.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Bissell, you have anything else?
Would it be appropriate to go over the changes to the plans of the special use permit tonight, or would you prefer that we wait to do that in two weeks?
I don't think that was advertised tonight, so I don't know that it would be proper to do that tonight. I would ask...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bissell, I've got one more stormwater question, and the reason I'm asking is because I, it's an important issue for me. The, when the pond is full, Mr. Weatherly, I'll refer to right behind Food Line. We witnessed that pond being full and the system wasn't working. Where does that water, from this pond, all the stormwater goes into that? Okay, when that pond is full, where is the water directed?
The water is directed to Survey Road, to the existing DOT ditch that runs along Survey Road to 168 and then under 168. It's a different culvert system than the one that you're talking about at Charlie Highs.
So there's another culvert that's south of those three?
There's a culvert right there at the end of Survey Road that runs under 168.
Okay.
DOT culvert. Actually, I think it's a box culvert.
All right, any other questions?
And let me just mention, as far as the sewer taps, they're being paid in four stages. They're being paid with 25% going down as part of the agreement and then the other 75% going to the county as each final plat is approved to go to record, like you used to do with the water system, except for the commercial. And the last part of that would be paid at the building permit stage because we don't know what the users and the volumes are yet. But the total that will be paid in sewer taps for this project is $943,000. That would go toward the cost of your wastewater system.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is, it's just, we're not voting on this.
We're not taking any, no, sir.
Okay, no action, we're just discussing this.
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
So any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. This is not on for action tonight. It'll be continued to the next meeting in November?
Actually, I do need to correct that, as Mr. Myers has pointed out. The last 25% does go at the, is paid at the building permit stage. So 25% down, 50% at the final plat approval and 25% with the building permits.
Feel like I'm buying a car.
Thank you.
With all the different percentages. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we're going to close this agenda item until the next meeting?
So this is just continued over?
Yeah, this was not for any action tonight. It was just...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you've closed the public hearing.
I did not close the public hearing.
I'm inquiring.
No, sir.
Okay. So you're recessing this until the next meeting?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is board appointments. I believe we have Whalehead Preservation appointments. Mr. Griggs?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Dan Scanlon to the Whalehead Board.
Okay, and Mr. Martin, I believe you have one as well?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Ike McCree to the Whalehead Board.
Okay, we have nomination of Dan Scanlon and Ike McCree to Whalehead. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next agenda item is consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Beaumont?
The, we've heard a lot of comment about the Rural Center and what goes on there. And I would encourage folks that have an opportunity, this Saturday is a fairly significant, fairly significant county-sponsored horse show that's going to be going on. I know they have riders from as far away as Williamson that are going to be attending. That will be followed up by another horse show on Sunday, and that's actually being held by a resident of the county. So if you want to see what goes on at a horse show, it's going to be very well attended. I believe last count was somewhere around 53 horses or, and/or riders.
If you don't like horses, there's other stuff to do.
Go kayaking, canoeing.
Yep. Mr. Griggs?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
I would only, did a, Mr. Beaumont said, if you've never been to a horse show, go. It is a lot of fun. And I would urge everyone, if you haven't been to the Rural Center, please, you're missing one of the beautiful, beautiful areas that the county provides for recreation. Also, the soccer fields will be dedicated Saturday morning at 9:30. And Jason Weeks, our Director for the Recreation Department and everything, would urge all of you to come out and we will see the first games being played on those new fields.
Yeah, I believe there's a tournament.
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is.
Mr. Islett?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow is the big V-Day. And please get out and exercise your right to vote. Be glad when it's over with and done. I would ask gentlemen from Knights Island, anyone who's put up big signs in the entrance coming on Knights Island there by the, coming off the causeway, he has asked that you please, when you take your signs up, bring some dirt and fill in your holes. Otherwise, he won't allow signs to be put there in the future. Kids walk across there all the time, those sidewalks, and he's afraid a kid's going to step in one of those holes and break an ankle. So please, fill your holes. I have passed the word and he's watching, so, thank you.
Mr. Petry?
I'd like to request at the next meeting, Mr. Scanlon, can you give us the formula that the county has in place for building schools? I have a concern with all the 540 homes that are being built. What, what formula we have in place so people will know that we're putting money aside as far as paying for the next school? Because I believe it's, it's, at the rate we're going, it looks like, I would think, in my estimate, we're going to have to build a school here in the coming years. Now, we do have a formula for, we've been setting money aside for schools, right?
Well, just to make sure I understand, we have a formula that we're tracking the projected student generation per subdivision, which we compare that to the capacity of schools to project when we think the new school will be needed, what the school type would be and the location of the school. And I feel at this stage, I think we're comfortable that that, this dialogue won't happen within the next five years.
So with 540 new homes, we don't feel like that we're going to have to build a new school?
No, sir. We do not feel like we need to build another school.
I'd still like to know the formula, if we could, you know, what we're doing as far as setting money aside at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert?
I'd just like to thank all the folks that came out to early voting and casted their votes early and look forward to seeing everybody at the polls tomorrow.
The only thing I would, Mr. Scanlon, is putting together some information, but we do have, members from the Department of Transportation have agreed to come to Currituck on Monday, December 15th, to hold a public meeting in Lower Currituck to discuss, to discuss traffic concerns as it relates to Lower Currituck and of course, going into the Outer Banks. Our DOT Representative Malcolm Fearing is putting it together. Representative Steinberg has also weighed in and we're holding it in Lower Currituck because that's where the people and the congestion is really a big problem there. And I'm not telling anybody, you don't have to live in Lower Currituck to know it, but Mr. Scanlon will be getting that information out and DOT will be doing a presentation. They'll be taking comments, ideas, suggestions, and hopefully sharing some ways that they can help with the traffic congestion and...
Can we establish time and place?
As we've established, the date of the 15th and the rest will be forthcoming. We're looking at a couple different places.
Yeah, well, just as a follow-up on that, that is in lieu of your second meeting in December, so I want to make sure the board is aware of that. The last several years, you historically, the holidays, not had your second meeting. This 15th is the third Monday of the month, so in lieu of having the meeting here, we'll be attending. It's actually going to be an NC DOT ran meeting. The county's responsibility is to provide a venue. We're looking at approaching you, the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department, depending on how many folks we think will attend, whether there's adequate parking and enough space there, or perhaps maybe using a different venue down there. But our responsibility will be getting the site and DOT will actually advertise and... will be getting the site, and DOT will actually advertise and moderate the meeting.
All right. Mr. Scanlon, you have any? Yes, sir?
Good luck.
Yeah, well, I've been to some colorful meetings down in Lower Currituck over the years, and...
I've been to some colorful DOT meetings. Good luck.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah. So, Mr. Scanlon, you have any?
Yes, sir.
With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.